Welcome, everyone. Open the meeting for the City Council.
Welcome, everyone. I call the Lane County, or the Lane Transit District Board Directors to order.
And before we get started tonight, Councilor Polling is going to be joining us by telephone. Is he joining us for this part, too?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I'm on the line now, ma'am.
Great, thank you, George. And...
I need to do a roll call.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. We don't do that one.
I'll do a roll call. Mr. Necker.
I am here.
Ms. Gertrude.
Here.
Ms. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Gillespie.
Here.
Mr. DA.
Here.
I'm President. And Mr. Norton.
Here.
Thank you.
We welcome you all. It's a pleasure to have a joint meeting with you tonight. And because of, it's our usual way we do things, and it's not the usual way you do things, so I just wanted to tell you that we, that we'll do this in hopes that it'll give us all a chance to get voices in at the table. So we'll use the three-minute timer, because that just makes sure we all move along. So I hope you'll be okay with that. Okay. Assistant City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm sitting in today for John Reese, who's out of town today. So I'm just going to turn it over to Zach Galloway, who's going to lead off the presentation.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Councilors and members of the board. My name is Zach Galloway. I'm a senior planner with the City of Eugene's Planning Division. And I'm joined this evening by the other members of the Moving Ahead Project Management Team, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Just throw your voice as far as you can throw it, please.
Sounds like I'm echoing.
I'm Chris Henry, Transportation Planning Engineer for the City of Eugene.
Sasha Luftig, Development Project Manager for Lane Transit District.
Thanks. So tonight, we'll provide an update on the Moving Ahead Project and the work done since your two bodies took action on this in October of 2015. And later, we'll ask you to take action on the current approach, and Chris will actually speak to that more directly. As a reminder for you here and for anybody watching at home on Metro TV, I just wanted to provide update on what Moving Ahead is. Collaborative project and approach between Lane Transit District and the city that's taking a system-wide approach to analyzing the future build-out of our frequent transit network. However, Moving Ahead is not just about transit. It's multimodal. We're looking at land uses along each of these corridors as well, thus the inter-agency cooperation between these three entities. And we'll, at the end of this, determine the full range of infrastructure enhancements needed to create an interconnected transportation network for people walking, biking, using mobility devices, and using transit, of course. I'll begin our presentation with a quick update on the project timeline, as well as the public outreach efforts that we've done of late, since October. And then Sasha and Chris will take you through the conceptual designs of each of our five corridors. And of course, we'll wrap up with questions, answers that you may have. So behind you, for some of you, or to your side, we've got the timeline there for the Moving Ahead Project. And as you may remember, in October of 2015, these two bodies took action to select the five corridors for additional analysis, which is the subject of our update today. Those effectively moved ahead into this stage: Highway 99, River Road, Coburg Road, 30th Avenue out to LCC, as well as Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And then, as a preview, looking ahead, if I have a pointer, yes, I do. Jumping ahead to the fall, we'll return to these two bodies for another joint work session to provide a update on the technical work that takes place during the summer. That all sets the stage for selection of a locally preferred alternative for each of the five corridors, which would take place in the winter of 2017. Let me jump ahead. So we just wanted to give you a flavor for the type of public outreach and involvement that we've undertaken since your October 2015 direction. We've continued those outreach, or those steps throughout this process checked, and since your direction, we've specifically been targeting the five corridors for more input. Excuse me. We've done canvassing on all five of the corridors, and LTD and city staff have actually walked, you know, hit the sidewalks and talked to, you see hundreds of properties along the way, and knocked on doors of each of those properties. In some cases, it were lengthy conversations; in other cases, it was a quick handshake. We left informational info, or materials, excuse me, and offered a follow-up. When that request was made, we had follow-up interviews or follow-up meetings to answer any questions. We've had stakeholder interviews with the different entities along the corridors, specifically folks that either, major property owners, anybody that asked for feedback, some of our social service providers that have either tenants or clientele, and then, of course, major employers as well that have employees and clientele that are frequent transit users or pedestrians along the corridor that have valuable info to share. We also began our coordination efforts with the multiple agencies, the multiple permitting agencies. We held a webinar for them to get them up to speed with our trajectory with the project. And the purpose here was to engage them early, make them aware, and ensure that we've got informed coordination down the road. The effort, I think, was well-received by all parties, and we'll, of course, continue that as we move through the project into future phases. We've, the three of us, as well as other LTD and city staff, have also attended numerous neighborhood association meetings on a bit of a roadshow to raise awareness, educate folks about the project, encourage their attendance at meetings, workshops, or different forms of engagement online as well. We've also attended a handful of business groups to cover those bases. On March 7, we hosted an open house to unveil the conceptual designs for each of the corridors and solicit feedback from the public on those proposals. Those are largely the concepts that you've got before you this evening, that Chris and Sasha will be covering. I believe our canvassing efforts and in the neighborhood meetings really helped us boost attendance. We had almost 80 folks in attendance, and then we had lots more that participated online. We had a parallel online open house that provided opportunity for folks to give their feedback that way if they weren't able to join us for an evening meeting. To give you a feel for our next phase, while the technical analysis is ongoing in the spring and summer, we didn't want there to be effectively radio silence. So we recognize that simply canvassing these corridors or hitting neighborhood associations isn't, doesn't reach everybody it needs to. So we're using our different partners, different groups in the community, to reach out to the folks that you see listed here. We're actually meeting with the Chamber of Commerce on Friday and are looking to them to help us reach the business community along each of the corridors. We recognize that some of the traditional or typical tools that we have in public involvement don't reach everybody, and certain folks are underrepresented. So we're also looking at more casual events that we can go to, table at, to reach the Latino community. For example, different schools, different pass-by trips, at different park events and that sort of thing. We're in the process of reaching out to every public school along all of these five corridors, so the principals, the PTA groups, to ensure that so many of the folks that use our service are informed there also. If anybody's been on River Road at 3 o'clock, you know that the North Eugene High School students are there in full force and definitely are riders. We also intend to build upon the success of the Lane Livability Consortium in reaching out to the affordable housing providers, many of whom have developments along these five corridors, and pursue engagement with their residents. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who will take you through an explanation of the different corridor concept proposals.
We have a lot of detail to go over. I'll cover about half of these corridors, and then Sasha will take over. But before we discuss the system and the corridors, I want to share a story that helps illustrate why we're engaged in Moving Ahead. And I received a phone call from a woman who lives about halfway up Lower River Road, and we'll call her Gertrude, after a great aunt of mine. Gertrude describes herself as a large woman and has mobility challenges, and she rides the bus. In her pursuit of better health and losing weight, she's trying to eat more fresh vegetables. She has difficulty crossing River Road, and she was asking for improvements to the pedestrian crossings near where she lives, so she can get from one side of the street to the bus stop on the other. And she gets her groceries at Winco off of Barger. That round trip, for her to get her groceries every two weeks so that she has fresh vegetables to sustain a healthy lifestyle, takes her five to six hours.
Wow.
And so that's why we're looking at improving a system that helps people get to the bus, across corridors, and more efficiently move about town and connect our important places together with, for the benefit of the people that live here. So we are taking a system approach. The map that you have in your handout and on the screen shows the corridors. We've combined the River Road corridor with the 30th Avenue to Lane Community College corridor. We'll talk about them separately, but for analysis purposes, they are, they are one alternative that have distinct independent utility of one another, if I got that correct, that they could be built independently, but they work together in a concept called interlining, where the same bus driver and same passengers often continue from one route to another route. In this case, people traveling from River Road are often destined to Lane Community College. And so there's some logical sense to that approach. And give you a reminder that you're being asked to take action this evening to recommend for further study of these corridors. Instead of being five, they're four. They're the River Road plus 30th Avenue to Lane Community College, Coburg Road, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and Highway 99. In the slides that are coming, there are slides for the transit improvements, and then a separate slide for improvements for people walking and biking. And that's because it would be too complicated and perhaps confusing visually to put all those elements on one slide. Many cases, the transit maps show dedicated transit lanes or queue jumps that help the buses get around congested areas on the road and other roadway improvements. In some cases, those roadway improvements are places where the road would simply be restriped for bikeways. In other cases, it might be to improve flow for people driving cars as well as the buses. And the maps for people walking and biking show both the existing facilities and future facilities that could be developed as part of the Moving Ahead portfolio of projects. Finally, the enhanced corridors would have stops, and that's buses, normal, probably articulated buses, would have stops spaced about a quarter-mile apart and use existing bus routes. So this slide shows the northern segment. This is River Road to downtown Eugene, and this is the enhanced corridor alternative. The next slide will talk about the bicycle and pedestrian improvements for this corridor. In the enhanced corridor for River Road, the bus is primarily in mixed traffic, except there are business-access turning lanes through the Beltline Interchange at the north. And the service would continue all the way up to a new Santa Clara station, transit station, near the side of the old Santa Clara School. And it follows the existing busways, bus routes on Railroad Boulevard and Blair Boulevard to downtown. And the service would alternate with, well, half the buses would be taking Blair, and half the buses would be taking Railroad Boulevard. So the major change, if any, is right around the Beltline Interchange is what we would see in this corridor. And then if we move to the bicycle and pedestrian enhancements, perhaps it's a little challenging. You'll see green arrows in a few locations where we're identifying opportunities for people to cross, we're maintaining the existing sidewalks and bike lanes on the street. So there's no restriping of River Road, other than changes at the Beltline Interchange. And now we move to the MX alternative for River Road. And here, we repurpose the outside travel lanes to business-access and transit lanes throughout most of the corridor. That's the purple lines through the corridor. Then when we approach the Beltline Interchange, we have, at least this is in the alternative that's being developed, a center-dedicated transit lane through the area. If you have questions about that, I'll do my best to answer, but trust me, it's a technique to get the buses through the congestion. It again serves the transit, the new transit center at the Santa Clara, in Santa Clara, and uses the existing MX, well, soon-to-be-open MX transit ways on 6th and 7th avenues. As we move to the pedestrian and bicycle improvements, they're very similar to what we saw in the enhanced corridor, except that along the majority of River Road, we have buffered bike lanes. So that's a normal bike lane with perhaps a two-foot striped buffer from the traffic next to it. And the pedestrian crossings that are typically mid-block or unsignalized intersections. And then there's a challenge and a choice to be made as we work through refining the details, getting people walking and biking through the Beltline Interchange. One choice is to continue with the separated sidewalk and bike lanes, and the other is to combine those, so that people riding bicycles would share, share used path with people walking. And now, I think we go to, yes, from downtown out Oak and Pearl Streets to Amazon Parkway and out 30th Avenue to Lane Community College. In the enhanced corridor here, the only changes are from 20th Avenue to the Eugene Station, that's to the north, because buses run in mixed traffic throughout the rest of the corridor. I think it changes the, I don't have detailed talking points for what happens in that segment from downtown to 20th, but I think we're changing the frequency of the bus stops there. On the improvements for people walking and biking, we have a buffered bike lane on both Oak and Pearl Street. Now we'll move to the MX alternative. And here, we have a business-access and turn lanes on Oak and Pearl from downtown to 20th Avenue. And then a new street through an existing public right-of-way, 20th Avenue, through the existing Civic Stadium site. That public right-of-way has been there all this time, it just has been in the form of a parking lot. But what we're envisioning is creating at least access for a single travel lane in each direction, shared with buses and automobiles, and it could be more. It could perhaps be a station location that provides service to community amenity. Then the buses necessarily have to run in mixed traffic on Amazon Parkway, and that's because, as we looked at the different options in this alternative, as we were developing the alternative, we found that many were fatally flawed because of the existence of threatened and endangered species along the corridor, specifically, well, not so specifically, there's some vegetation there that's on the listed plan. There would be a station improvement at 27th Avenue. There's currently a clump of trees and an island there. And 27th Avenue connects to what's hoped to be a revitalized South Willamette Street, and that was identified as a need through that long concept development as part of the South Willamette concept plan. And then there would also be some improvements at Hilliard Street to improve the flow. This is, now you're getting to 30th and Hilliard, to improve the flow for both people driving cars and the buses. And then from there, the MX vehicles would run in mixed traffic out to Lane Community College. We don't see a congestion problem that would require the dedication of right-of-way to the MX vehicles out there, and so it's acceptable for them to run in mixed traffic. And then, before I hand off to Sasha, this is the pedestrian and bicycle improvements that, there aren't currently bike lanes on Oak Street, but there's a potential to add them. That may require some consideration of parking in the area. If bike lanes aren't included, as we work through the details here, there's also another project that could be supported by Moving Ahead as a two-way cycle track on High Street. And then, of course, as in many of the other alternatives, it includes new or enhanced crossings for people walking and biking through the corridor.
Okay, now, I will take over with Highway 99. So those of you that have the alternatives packet, it's actually the first ones in the packet. So for Highway 99's enhanced corridor alternative, it's primarily operating in mixed traffic. The plan would be to use 11th and 13th, operating in mixed traffic, to connect to Highway 99 using the existing stops and route. There'll be some queue jumps or dedicated transit lanes at Barger, Bethel, Roosevelt, and approaching Chambers. For the Highway 99 pedestrian and bicycle improvements for the enhanced corridor, primarily it's new pedestrian and bicycle crossings at mid-block or unsignalized locations. It would maintain existing bike lanes and sidewalks. And it also, an option we discovered at the very beginning of the first workshop we held out at Willamette High School, members of the Trainsong Neighborhood came to the workshop, and they talked about how isolated they felt in their neighborhood. So we're also talking about including a new bicycle pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks to connect Trainsong Neighborhood to Highway 99. And so that's near Trainsong Park, which is right here. For the MX alternative, we are talking about adding queue jumps or dedicated transit lanes at Barger, Bethel, Roosevelt, and approaching Chambers. It would utilize the West Eugene MX route on 6th and 7th to reach the Eugene Station. And for the terminus, we're talking about including an on-street terminus at Barger Drive and Cubit Street. And you'll notice that most of this is actually dark gray, and that indicates that there's restriping to allow for buffered bike lanes in this alternative. So as I mentioned, for the bicycle and pedestrian improvements, we'd restripe Highway 99 to create narrower travel lanes that allows the opportunity to have buffered bike lanes. Again, it would include new pedestrian and head crossings at unsignalized intersections and mid-block crossings, and it would also include the Trainsong Neighborhood. We're also talking about looking at improvements at Roosevelt to connect bikes to the new multimodal path, multi-use path there. So into Coburg Road. Now, this is the more complicated alternative to explain, so give me a moment. So for the enhanced corridor alternative for Coburg Road, it would use, from Eugene Station, it would use Oak and Pearl to connect to 7th and 8th, to the Ferry Street Bridge. There'd be bat lanes from Ferry Street Bridge to the I-105 intersection, and this would not, it's important to point out, impact trees in the middle of Coburg Road or the multi-use path. And again, as a reminder, bat lanes are, I like to think of them as bus and turn lanes, business-access and transit lanes. We would also improve areas for right-turning lanes to improve car movement at certain locations, get the cars out of the way more quickly for buses at Oakmont, Harlow, Willackenzie, the Beltline Interchange area. And we would use the routing up in the northern section, we would look at, we're looking at using Crescent and Chad to serve the really important land uses, such as, there's a lot of multifamily housing up there, as well as the VA Hospital. Unfortunately, due to the limited right-of-way, there's not a ton of opportunity to evaluate additional improvements in terms of width of bike lanes on Coburg Road. So what we have identified, sorry, are improvements for crossing Coburg Road. Those are the main improvements for people who walk and bike along Coburg. For the MX alternative, we would use Oak and Pearl and 6th and 7th from Eugene Station to Ferry Street Bridge. Once there, and on 6th and 7th, we're looking at the opportunity for using bat lanes to make it more efficient to get onto the Ferry Street Bridge. Once there, we would, it includes center-running transit lanes from Ferry Street Bridge to the I-105 intersection, I mean, on-ramp. And again, this does not impact trees in the middle of Coburg Road or multi-use paths. There are some potential property impacts with this option. From I-105 North, we would use a single dedicated transit lane at Oakmont and Harlow to allow buses to bypass congestion at intersections. And it's not the traditional bidirectional lane you're familiar with on Franklin. Buses are traveling in opposite directions, never, and are never using that. At the same time, it allows the buses that are approaching the intersection to have the dedicated lane, and then as soon as they go through the intersection, they transition into mixed traffic with the help of transit signal priority. So it's something we haven't seen in this area yet, but it offers an opportunity in a limited right-of-way scenario such as Coburg Road. We would also look at extending right-turn lanes at Willackenzie to improve auto traffic and allow buses to move more quickly through those, that intersection. And as we go through Beltline, it would include a center-dedicated lane for transit, so going under the Beltline intersection. And again, we would look at using Chad to serve the land uses like the VA and the other housing up there. Again, the same is true with the MX alternative as with the enhanced corridor alternative of Coburg. We've been able to identify improvements for crossings on Coburg, but because of the limited right-of-way, there's not a lot of additional space. And we're almost through, home stretch. So Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, to remind you, it was determined we would only evaluate an enhanced corridor alternative for this, for this segment, because it was originally sent, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard to, including Centennial, and it didn't make sense to evaluate the full corridor for MX, just this little segment. So the enhanced corridor, though, is looking at the idea of repurposing right-hand, the right-hand lane in both directions to a bat lane from the bridge on MLK to Garden Way. And that is because we've heard a lot of concerns about the speed traveled on that road, and this would be an opportunity to look at, how can you slow down traffic? Also, there'd be a queue jump at Martin Luther King Boulevard to Coburg to allow better access to get on Coburg Road over the Ferry Street Bridge. And this option would use the same as the Coburg-enhance option of Oak, Pearl, and 7th, 8th to reach the Eugene Station or Ferry Street Bridge in the other direction. And we've also identified three new crossings for bicycles and pedestrians along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. So I'm going to pause really quickly and see if there's questions about the alternatives before we move forward in the presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions?
I'm just wondering if you could remind us a little bit of the, when we've got one label... labeled MX alternative, pedestrian bicycle improvements versus MX alternative transit and roadway improvements, kind of how those intersect or whether they do with each other?
Yes, they are the exact, they are the same alternative, just separated on two different maps to make it easier to read.
Great.
Yes, done.
I'm just curious about the bicycle and-
Yes, I'll get you, George.
-pedestrian crossing. Is there any infrastructure built there? Is it just stripes on the streets?
In some of the locations identified, if they're at intersections, there may be stripes, others, there may not be any infrastructure at all.
Typically, these are major roadways, and typically there'd be a center island refuge, and depending if there's a station located in the middle of the roadway or not, the station itself becomes that island. There's some examples on River Road, for example, where we have rectangular rapid-flashing beacons that would be similar to what we would envision in these design alternatives.
Sorry, I was speaking to existing conditions.
Is there opportunities or, like, share infrastructure?
We've examined that to make sure that we reserve space, and that's really an important distinction here. We're trying to establish what the footprint is of these corridor improvements so that we can analyze their environmental impact. We don't have all the details of just exactly how wide this lane or that lane is, but in total, all the space should be sufficient to accommodate those things. And as we move through the process, in the design process, and certainly in final design, we'll get very specific about where the locations are for those kinds of facilities.
Did you have anybody else in the queue? I've got, I've got George Bowling and Alan Zelenka and Greg Evans. George?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. On the EMX alternative, it's being shown as using the 5th and 6th street sections, the same as the West 11th EMX does. Has there been any modeling done or calculations done as far as conflicts between those two different routes?
We've done initial, and you said, sorry, you cut out for a moment, just to confirm, you said Highway 99?
No, no, it's the 5th, on the, I'm sorry, the Highway 99 EMX alternative, we're choosing 5th and 6th Street.
6th and 7th, actually. So, the same, to connect to downtown Eugene, it would utilize the infrastructure that is currently being constructed or already constructed for the West Eugene MX. We've already talked to VKS, our traffic consultant firm, and at a high level, they believe that, from a technical feasibility standpoint, we are able to operate that route as well as River Road if both were to be moved forward.
Okay, thank you. And then on the Coburg Road at Shadow View and Chad, go up there during the busy times of day, it's going to be a little difficult making turns off of Shadow View. Is there being a signal being proposed for that intersection, a regular traffic signal?
That's a level of detail we're not at yet to determine whether or not we need intersection controls there, but certainly we'll look at, evaluate whether that's necessary.
That's a helpful comment for us.
In the last three years, there's been almost 1,400 new housing units either built, being built, or being proposed in that general area up there. And with the increase of people, you're getting the increase of vehicles, so it's just kind of, kind of a heads-up type of thing for that particular intersection.
Thank you.
And then I have a couple more questions or comments about the Coburg Road. It shows on the MX alternative pedestrian and bicycle improvement, a number of pedestrian crossings, and Chris, I believe you were saying something about those would be the ones with the flashing lights, is that correct?
That's one potential treatment. The other is called a pedestrian hybrid beacon, and that has some red lights in it as well.
Okay, so currently, on Coburg Road between Oakmont and, I guess it'd be Oakway, right there at the Oakway Center by the Albertsons, we have a couple of stops currently, and people rather than walking 100, 150 feet to crosswalk or crossing in the middle of the intersection.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to start looking at maybe putting one of these improved crosswalks, pedestrian crossings in that area also?
Yes, we can look at that.
Then, the last comment or question is on the queue jumps at Harlow and at Beltline. Again, during the peak hours of traffic, I don't know if it's the timing of the signals or people are just in a hurry, but oftentimes, those intersections will be blocked by people that enter the intersection on a yellow light but get stuck out in the middle of the intersection. How is that signaling or queue jump going to work specifically at Harlow and Coburg and Beltline when this occurs? Is it going to give it a delay, or how is that going to work?
Well, some of that's a driver behavior problem. You shouldn't be entering an intersection that you can't clear. I mean, that's a-
Yeah, I realize that.
Rule of the road, yeah.
It happens all the time.
But, yes, it does happen. But, well, that's not just for your benefit, it's for the public's benefit to say that. We'll have to evaluate how those dedicated transit lanes are constructed and how long they extend back from those points of congestion to ensure that the transit service can move through that, those intersections.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all, I'll head to this time.
Okay, thanks, George. Okay, next is Alan.
Yeah, thanks. I've served on the Moving Ahead Committee, and I've seen these a bunch of times, they keep evolving, but that's a good thing. And we're moving forward with Highway 99 corridor and the River Road all the way through LCC and the Coburg Road, so that leaves out the Martin Luther King one as moving forward with that. I'll come back to that in a second. But, on the River Road to LCC, in particular, the 20th Avenue that you mentioned and the right-of-way, have you talked to the folks at the Civic Alliance? And my understanding is they're not exactly sold on the idea of having a bus corridor right through the middle of their property. I don't think that's exactly what we envisioned when we sold them the property, but what's the status of that?
Representatives from the Eugene Civic Alliance attended our workshop, as well as their design staff from a local landscape architecture firm. We've talked through the options there briefly, and we are basically in a constant game to try and schedule everybody, all the important players, to get into a room and just discuss what their plans are and what Moving Ahead's plans are. So, we're kind of in the scheduling challenge right now, but the conversation's been started, and they're certainly willing to talk.
Yeah, I'd encourage you to do that. They might have some competing interests, depending on how that gets all developed, and that little northern part that is owned might be, if it's turned into commercial property, then access to that makes a lot of sense, but if not, then maybe it doesn't. So, yeah, I'd encourage you to talk to those folks and engage them in that process. The other question I have is about the fact that most of the, a lot of this stuff goes north-south, and we don't have very good access across the town in terms of going from east to west. And the Martin Luther King corridor is that, but that only comes up to Coburg Road. And I'm wondering what happened, maybe you can explain what happened, I know what happened to it, but maybe you can explain what happened to the other part of it from Coburg Road out to, to, like, River Road where, and in particular, how it works with the potential transit bridge that would be occurring, that would also be a vehicle bridge on the north of the existing bridge that goes across the river at Delta Highway?
So, Moving Ahead, as a system, as it gets constructed, creates those opportunities for the east-west connection, and the Lane Transit District transit planners have been looking at ways to improve local service, and then perhaps in the programmatic sense that Moving Ahead is an ongoing program, many years in the future, we would be able to develop MX or enhanced corridor improvements along those routes. But, we need a place to get to and to and from with that frequent and reliable service that makes critical connections for people trying to travel everywhere, really.
Yeah, so the, so, very unlikely to me that MX would actually be on the Beltline in it. It'd be too complicated and too expensive to get people on and off of it, so, probably. And so, if that's true, then moving it just north of there across Martin Luther King and then cutting across, different ways to cut across the city makes that bridge, the new bridge that cuts across the river, that would be used for transit, a very important part of the infrastructure changes that would occur at the River Road, I mean, the Delta-Beltline intersection.
Right, it could run on-
That's part of that work that we're doing in that, is to create that bridge that would also be a transit bridge. Yes. Okay, thanks.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Alan, you stole one of my lines, so, well, you know, it's okay. But, what I, what I really want to do is kind of, you know, get into more of the nitty-gritty about how the enhanced corridors are going to provide more penetration and depth into the neighborhoods, and what it's going to look like specifically around neighborhood circulators being able to connect back into the main lines, and how that's going to look, and how that's going to be created. Because one of the problems that we have, particularly out in my neighborhood in Bethel, is the, again, as you pointed out, Chris, the time it takes to go from, you know, you're at point A in Bethel to River Road, or where, in a car, you know, with, you know, moderate traffic, it takes five to seven minutes to get there versus somebody going all the way in town, coming back out, and then having to, you know, do that whole loop again, which is, you know, part of the whole crosstown issue that Alan brought up. So, in the nearer future, the nearer future, how are we going to look at enhancing, you know, that capability for people? Because there's a lot of people who want to go from, you know, the Barger and Beltline to, say, Riverbend, or Barger and Beltline to Costco, or Barger and Beltline to, you know, or from River Road back over to Winko.
So, the enhanced corridors still, they improve frequency of service to 15 minutes. They also improve reliability of travel time for transit, because we're still looking at intersection improvements of how buses can get through congestion along the corridors. So, really, it still allows that frequent corridor, that attractive transit investment in the corridor, along with investments for people biking and walking, in order to talk, look at and evaluate, how do we connect the neighborhoods better into those corridors? So, what types of transit service can we provide or expand our existing routes to better serve those neighborhoods and then connect into the frequent, more attractive transit service along the, along the enhanced corridor?
I think you said neighborhood circulation.
Yeah, I'm talking about like, yeah, the, you know, the 30-foot coaches that would, you know, like, we used to have the Breeze that would come downtown and go back out to Valley River, you know, those kind of coaches that would service kind of those tighter neighborhood clusters that, you know, like River, River Loop 1, River Loop 2, you know, some of the other, you know, developments that are further out for the core of the city.
As we develop these alternatives, the transit planners are looking at neighborhood circulators that would work in concert with the enhanced corridors or MX corridor improvements.
I see Mr. Schwett's answers and comments.
It's circling.
Yes, looming, looming here. So, since there've been a couple of questions about crosstown connectivity, just, oh, Tom Schwett with Lane Transit District. There've been a couple of questions talking about crosstown connectivity with transit, and I just wanted to lay out a couple of things that are specific. One, with the development of the West Eugene MX, we have been working on the redevelopment of the way service works there. And the principle that I want to talk about, that we're working on across the system, is the concept of matching the frequency of either an enhanced corridor or a BRT corridor with the crosstown connectivity of the regular service. And so, in the redevelopment of the service around the West Eugene MX line, we're looking at creating more direct connections up to the Bethel area. For example, if you're familiar with the Route Number 36 that operates now on 18th and 11th, that's slated to run directly up to Bethel and Baxwell, create that connectivity to the MX that way, and then eventually, depending on what we all decide we want to do with 99, that creates another source of connection. So, the principle is matching that, that frequency with the connectivity. So, for example, another example that we're looking at, the 66 and 67 run on Coburg Road and Good pasture Island, and we're increasing the frequency of those routes to 15 minutes. That really creates the ability to create that crosstown connectivity that can match up with that 15-minute service and really give good connection. So, we could look at running that, you know, straight across, connecting those two areas, and then also going up Harlow Road all the way into Springfield. So, those are some of the things that we're thinking about, but the principle I wanted to relate is, you know, getting the MX or enhanced corridor infrastructure in place really allows us to reinvent the network away from the hub and spoke to something that provides more connectivity.
So, Tom, before you go, I've still got a few more seconds left. So, would you be looking at reconfiguring, say, the 43?
Yes.
As part of that, that reconfiguration? Because that's where, I know a lot of people say they would take the bus, but the bus takes too long.
Right. So, we have a plan in place, we'd be happy to share that with you, councillor.
Got it.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the hard work that went into this. I know that this is still kind of a 30,000-foot sort of look, but that there is a little bit more detail in that, okay, from this section, we know we're going to need some dedicated lane at this part, we know we're going to operate in a mixed traffic, or we're going to change the nature of the lane. I would be interested to note those places where the, where there is the possibility to do so, say, with the Coburg Road plant, where expansion is possible of the road or where that's intended in any place during, on the course of that corridor. I still have some concerns with that corridor, and I guess the more information I get as we go along, the better. I'm persuaded that it is intelligent to continue to study this, it's intelligent to continue to say, "What if?" I just want to reiterate the idea, though, that when we get to the end of that process of study and "what if," I wouldn't want to hear, "Well, we've been planning this for so long, we just absolutely have to do it." You know, I would hope that we would have a reasonable conversation at that point about the wisdom of it. The reason is because I look at this, for example, and with what little information I have at this moment, and I grant that that's the case. I live, as one goes up Oakway Road, as you look at this Coburg area here, and oftentimes, depends on where I'm going, I might enter onto Coburg Road from one end or another of this map here. And I note that there are, depending on what time of day, even in not 5:00 PM or not 8:00 AM, but there are other parts of the afternoon where it might take me a half an hour to get from Willaquenzi down to where the Oakway Center is there, Oakway Road, in two lanes the way they exist. So, most of that is gray, and, which indicates no change.
The light gray.
Yeah, and so, I have to tell you, I have a difficult time imagining a scheduled MX making it through that corridor in that space without a fairly large-scale amount of change, because I know just trying to get down the road in the car is a pretty tough deal right through there, so. I guess I'm looking forward to getting more information, I guess is the best way I would describe it.
Well, one of the challenges is, in the environmental process, the result that we're seeking is a documented categorical exclusion, and that's, that's less than an environmental impact study and less than an environmental assessment, and so it's like the lowest level of environmental clearance that you could have. In order to do that, you don't construct new bridges or modify bridges. This congested point over the viaduct would, is a bridge, and that becomes a challenge from the environmental perspective to get through to the funding sources that we're going to try to seek here. North of the viaduct to I-105 is an area where the MX alternative would require some additional right-of-way. Not taking trees out of the middle, but we'd have- middle, but we'd have to grow a little on the sides for the dedicated center transit lane. Maybe center in the sense they're in the middle of the road, but they're on either side of the trees there.
And maybe it would help if I walked through the next steps of the alternatives analysis, which is the next slide that explains when we get into more detail and come back to you with more information.
Excellent. So, our vote today is to say to do what?
You are looking to take action that these are the appropriate range of alternatives to carry forward into the technical alternatives analysis.
You've done that in October, but since then, the design alternatives have refined some. You've moved ahead the-
Concepts.
Concepts, and now we're moving the alternatives into the formal alternatives analysis over the summer months. And in the fall, well, Sasha's going to mention what the next steps are.
Sure, sure, sure. And I don't want to jump too far ahead there. But at what point do we begin? I recognize that you've done the door-to-door work so far here and all the work on the street. But at what point do we make specific notification to property owners that their property will be affected or may be potentially needed as part of this process?
We are working on sending a letter out to property and business owners along the corridors, informing them of the process and the alternatives carried forward so that they can see what these alternatives look like. In many cases, many of the corridors, there would not be a property impact. Most of the properties, in some, there would be.
When was my question? When will that go to them?
We will be sending that out later this spring.
This spring, right now? That's about to become summer?
Very soon.
Bring summer, maybe, is it better?
Thank you very much.
Sasha, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Are there any members of the LTD Board that have it? Yes, Edward?
I just wanted to speak to Mike. No, you said that there were no improvements from Willa Kenzie on down to Oakmont. The enhanced corridor and the MX corridor are different. I don't know which one you were referring to.
MX.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, great. Anyone else from the LTD Board?
Well, I appreciate Counselor Evans' comments and Counselor Zalinka's comments relative to the connectivity, because I know that we're looking at taking advantage of an opportunity to provide better options for people. And that doesn't mean going from, you know, from out North River Road to downtown Eugene, but it's talking about going from maybe available to Valley River, River Road to out of West 11th and Belt Line, looking at that connectivity issue. And I think that's really important, and I appreciate you bringing that up because I think there's an opportunity here. And I know myself, I'm anxious to get into the nitty-gritty. We're not there, so I won't make some of the other comments that I might have made. So, but thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Sasha, you want to go on?
Yeah, so, next step. So, if you look behind you, we essentially are wrapping up this stage. We have refined the corridor concepts and determined, and hopefully tonight will determine, that these are the appropriate set of alternatives to advance into the impacts analysis, also known as the alternatives analysis. And that really allows us to compare the alternatives to make an informed decision. So, we're comparing those alternatives we evaluated with a no change, so that you know what the existing conditions are compared to the potential benefits and impacts of these alternatives. Then we'll be able to do a trade-offs analysis of every alternative, looking at the adverse impacts and beneficial effects, so that we bring that information back to you to help you inform the decision that's coming later this winter. So, we'll come back to you this fall with the results of that alternatives analysis in preparation for selection of a locally preferred alternative later this winter. We'll be going out to the public with all that information as well and getting additional input and feedback. Just to be clear, as we're doing the technical analysis, these alternatives have to hold constant, but after we go through that, we can then make additional refinements. So, this is not the last alternative you will see. There will be changes, but for the technical review, it has to remain constant. So, just as a reminder to speak to what Chris talked about earlier, really, this project is about improving access for everyone throughout our community and improving connectivity as Counselor Zalinka and Evans talked to earlier. It also is really important, looking at these investments, on how are these investments going to support the future growth of our community. So, we're excited about the next steps of this project, and we look forward to any other questions you have. Again, the action is, are these the appropriate range of alternatives to advance into the impact analysis?
A couple of things you could help me with is if you could tell me, in general, some of the responses you've gotten as you've gone out to the community, some of the main questions. For example, I would think that you have to help people understand why we're doing so many at a time and why that's a good idea, those kinds of things. So, I'm just interested in what you're hearing.
Go ahead.
A lot of what we hear about is improving the crossings of the street, that the streets, the corridors themselves are barriers to people getting to where they want to go. And so, that's not necessarily a transit issue, but it's a more localized community issue and how people get to school, too, and parents moving through the corridor safely with their children. Safety is a priority for people, and that's, of course, one of the emphases of moving ahead is to create safe and accessible transportation for everyone.
So, in your conversation with people, what are the, have they indicated any, I heard what they're concerned about, but do they have specific concerns about the, that you hear from more than one person, about the routes that we're looking at and the alternatives?
I think it's fair to say that the River Road neighborhood is the most active in the process, that they are eager to see improvements made to improve the safety locally, but also to provide that service downtown. And they definitely want the traffic to slow down on River Road. And having dedicated transit lanes there, or actually, it's a business access and turning lane, reduces the number of through-travel lanes for automobiles. It provides a turning lane, so there's still that extra capacity. But they see an opportunity with MX improvements in particular over the enhanced corridor or no build alternatives.
Heard anything in particular from the Highway 99 area?
I would say fewer comments in general from the Highway 99 area, where there are comments. It really is focused on the safety concerns about crossing the street.
I think part of the challenges on Highway 99, I got a phone call from a woman, dare I mention it, about South Alamat Street today, and she was commenting about, well, people aren't riding bicycles there. And I said, that's because it's not a very comfortable place for people to ride bicycles. And so, on Highway 99, while there is a paved shoulder there, it's not a very comfortable place to be, and it's a very wide and busy and street with high-speed traffic in some places, very high-speed traffic, 55 miles an hour to the northern end, that doesn't lend itself, and that type of commercial development there doesn't lend itself to walking or biking. And so, there appears to be less interest. People are oftentimes in these long-term planning processes challenged to envision a future that's better than what they have now.
Is there a connection that you will make as you go through the process between the work on Vision Zero and the work on, and can you talk about that a little bit?
So, the City of Eugene, I think it's important to acknowledge that the Lane Transit District Board is considering-
It's actually passed.
Passed a Vision Zero policy, as well as the city's resolution and the ongoing, or the upcoming task force work. Both Lane Transit District and the City of Eugene will have portfolios of projects. There are bits and pieces to work on that may or may not be included as part of moving ahead improvement, but do infect the safety of people moving through our transportation system. So, in the pursuit of zero fatalities and serious injuries in our community, we definitely have opportunities to make safer crossings for people and along these corridors with the moving ahead developments and independent of them for each agency.
It seems to me, when you talk about this, that what you're hearing from people are predominantly issues of safety and access. So, if I were suggesting how we go about talking to the public about this, I would be talking to them right back about what they want to talk about and suggest that that's sort of the door that you walk into this moving ahead, that we're trying to move ahead in terms of public access and public safety for, no matter where you live in Eugene. And that might be the kind of conversation that people can tune into and not have their eyes roll back, as you do, on the minutia of conversation, even though it's very important. I'm going to call on Ed, Claire.
I would just like to say that-
And?
Since the MX system was entered in the Eugene Transit Plan 10 years, 10 or 12 years ago, it was entered as a system. I think that that is a fact that has not been emphasized enough.
Great.
People see it as, because we've had to build it as individual legs-
Right.
People see it as this leg. And I think that we need to emphasize that it is destined to be a system, we could say, comparable to MAX, comparable to BART. We could say something like that, you know, because it is much less expensive than light rail, but it is similar.
But way cooler.
Has similar amenities.
All right, and I've got, Claire, you're up next.
Thanks. I just wanted to offer some comments. I just want to appreciate the, I can sing so loud, the robust community outreach effort and also the plans you have for spring and summer and the particular groups that you called out and identified. Even at this high level, I think these proposals are really thoughtful, and it's obvious that a lot of people have put a lot of good creative thinking into it, considering the details and the various challenges that each route poses to us, you know, whether it's already crowded streets or vegetation we need to protect, or safety enhancements. You know, taking advantage of the wide lanes on Highway 99, for example, to think about putting in a buffered bike lane, I think, is great. I also appreciated the information we got during the session about that this isn't just about MX, but that other bus routes are going to be looked at and perhaps altered to really create greater connectivity north, south, east, and west. And I'll just say, I've had some recent conversations with folks in River Road neighborhood leadership and definitely reflect exactly what you were sharing with us about their enthusiasm for this project and what it will mean in terms of increased safety, better pedestrian access, and good thorough fare for public transit. So, and I'm, you know, I understand that combining them with the 30th Avenue in terms of technical things and engineering, but would not want to see the River Road route to be delayed if there were some issues that came up with the 30th Avenue section. And then lastly, I'll say, I've also had one of the neighborhood leaders from Chainsong reach out to me about that proposed pedestrian bike bridge and very much, although I haven't had a chance to speak with him, I'm thinking he really wants to make sure that happens and to create greater connectivity with Chainsong with our other neighborhoods and our transit. So, just very excited about this and looking forward to when you all come back.
If I may, much of the credit for the creative thinking and the careful planning here goes to our consultant team from CH2M and DKS Associates and Linda Wanamaker of Wanamaker Consulting. They've done the bulk of the work here. We, of course, have reviewed and collaborated, and we've had workshops to develop these alternatives. But there's some very dedicated staff at those companies that are consulting firms that are working for us.
Great.
Thanks, Mayor. One of the problems that we're facing right now rapidly, and this is one of those chicken and egg things in West Eugene and North Eugene, is increasing traffic congestion with automobiles and trucks and all of that, mainly because we have rapidly increasing single-family development that's occurring and has been occurring for the last 12 years or so. So, for instance, if you're looking out to the Highway 99 enhancements and going out to Barger, what does that specifically mean for us in terms of handling some of those issues? Because right now, we're getting at a critical point where all of those major arterials are choked off at, you know, the two main key times a day, in the morning and the evening, and it's starting to get worse. It is bleeding into other parts of the day. So, one of the concerns that people have brought up to me is terminating the MX route or potential enhanced route at Barger and Belt Line, somewhere in there around the Winko development. Has there been any discussion about extending that out farther or, you know, more towards Green Hill and the possible linkages with the test service that's going out to the airport?
That's probably the most challenging question this evening, because the Barger corridor is so constrained by the development there. And by development, I mean people's homes. And the sidewalks are curbside, there are bike lanes there, but there's not a lot of room to widen out for transit stations. There's a little more on the segment from Highway 99 to Belt Line, and there would be transit stops there if there was a MX alternative or transit, MX stations is what I meant to say. Moving the terminus further west of Belt Line creates some challenges about where. Perhaps, is it fair to say that Bethel School District might be exploring the future of some of their school sites, and that might create an opportunity. We're looking at that shopping center on the east side, perhaps to the south is a potential redevelopment opportunity. And there's a library there now. I'm kind of-
Yeah, Bethel Library.
Yeah, a branch library there, and there's some important connections that can be made. Moving further west, what we found is the ridership is quite, well, not quite low, relatively low compared to other corridors. So, how to solve that problem, as we had an example earlier about, well, people aren't there because the facilities or the sidewalks and the bus services aren't adequate to draw them there. But we also heard about improvements in neighborhood circulation. And so, there's probably the real opportunity is to have west of Belt Line improved neighborhood circulation, bus service that connects to a transit station near Belt Line.
Okay, anybody else have any comments they want to make? Do you?
No, we're good.
So, my only other comment would be that sometimes when we start out a conversation, we're thinking about how to smooth traffic out and how to get people from point A to point B. And in the course of the conversation, people's minds get changed about the possibilities for making it a more livable neighborhood and making better connections and making things all work better to enhance people's lives in many, many ways at the same time as you have done out in your work going out West 11. So, I sort of look at Belt 99 in a similar kind of way. We have one way of looking at 99 now, for the most part, and that's how fast can you get through it. But that doesn't mean it always has to be like that. And I know that Greg's working hard on that. But I think there is something in this conversation where you can open people's eyes to the possibility of how to improve things for the lives of everyone who lives in that area. And one vehicle for doing this is transit, right? So, I just, I hope that we seize upon this opportunity to not only think about the economic development of that area, but also the livability and connectivity of that area and how we can get people to start thinking about it in a very different way as a place where people want to live and raise their kids. So, that's all my, and the other thing is, on my mind all the time, I think we talk about it in many ways, as you have tonight, about bike lanes and pedestrian and so forth. But I feel like it's important for us to talk about the- But I feel like it's important for us to talk about the concept of complete streets whenever we do this, because it's not, it's not something that we do, everybody kind of understands and gets. And so I think that the notion here of how we're trying to make complete streets that work for all modes of transportation and for all people is a really important conversation as we deal with these corridors as well. And so to the degree that we can stick that language in there and build and educate people more about that, I think that's it to our benefit.
That's very helpful, because I feel like every time we talk to someone, still when they recall what we talked about, in their minds, it's a transit project. And so the more and more we can remind them, this isn't just a transit project, this isn't LTD going it alone, this is a city of Eugene and LTD project about how we move people safely and efficiently.
We're going to put a motion on the table soon, but before we do that, I want to express to AHA and Gary and everyone else involved, my thanks for this morning's visit. We had the, for those of you who don't know, we had the pleasure of having the governor come and really looking out toward complete streets and really looking out at perhaps some transportation money through the next legislative session and so getting, I listened to her questions, and it was clear to me that perhaps she hadn't had much of an education about BRT or MX or any, all of those things. So it was a really important visit today, and I really want to express my appreciation to everyone who was involved. And the way that we approached it was truly about complete streets in Springfield and Eugene and trying to build that multimodal corridor and what that can do for the state and what it can do for all of us. It was a really, I think, important meeting, and everybody did a terrific job. So thank you for all that organizing effort. We appreciated it a lot.
Well, I thank you for all of your comments, because you answered questions that she asked, that the governor asked, and they were great. And I just really appreciate yourself and Mary Lundberg for all their input today. That went really well. But thank you very much.
It was a really good visit, yes.
Appreciate that.
All right, you want to put the motion on the table?
Yes, Mayor. I recommend action to further study the following Moving Ahead Corridor Alternatives for evaluation of an MX alternative, an enhanced corridor alternative, and a no-build alternative for the alternatives analysis.
Moved and--
Keep going.
Go more.
Yeah, that's right. Highway 99 corridor, River Road, 30th Avenue, Lang Community College corridor, Coburg Road corridor, and recommend that the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard corridor alternative advance as an enhanced corridor and a no-build alternative for the alternatives analysis.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Counselors, all those in favor, please indicate.
I vote yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. In favor, thank you, and none in opposition, so it passes. Thank you all very much.
Yes, so the board of directors of LTD, there's a motion in your packet, similar to the motion that was just made. Do I have a, anyone that's willing to make a motion? Yes, Julie.
I move approval, I move approval of Resolution Number 2016-015 to further study the following Moving Ahead Corridor Alternatives for evaluation of an MX alternative, an enhanced corridor alternative, and a no-build alternative for the alternatives analysis. Highway 99 corridor, River Road, 30th Avenue, Lang Community College corridor, and Coburg Road corridor, and that the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard corridor an alternative advance as, alternative advance as an enhanced corridor and a no-build alternative for the alternatives analysis.
Is there a second? There's a second, girl, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? If none, by raises of the hands, all those in favor? Okay, both, same. We have all the votes unanimous. Thank you.
Right, and finish with the business of the day. Thank you all very, very much. All right, thank you.
LTD Board stands adjourned.